Okay. So, so I'm gonna need a motion. And a second to appoint Fred Hutchinson to facilitate the board meeting on October 11. All in favor? The opposed? Okay, take it away Fred.
Okay. Alright, thank you everybody for showing tonight. Our first point of order is the approval of the present agenda. We have a motion. All in favor? Aye. Okay, now we're gonna open it up to public comment. This is public comments specifically on the agenda items for the evening. Any public comments? I see no hands online either. Okay. We will have board member comment. We're gonna have board member comments? Okay, right along. Student representatives report. Gracie, take it away.
So, I think it's follow up to our last meeting where I kind of left off with it was during Spirit Week. All of our homecoming games went well. We had really good student turnout for all of them. And I think that our Spirit Week was also success. The dance was a massive success. We ended up selling 180 tickets. So that is some of the biggest turnout we've had in a couple of years. We're hoping to do another Spirit Week probably in January for basketball. Just because we feel like we that brought out a lot of sports spirit and we had a lot of participation. Our club bill is also fairly successful. We had it available during our parent night and our pep rally day. In addition to having the signs in the cafeteria for students to look at later. And then we had an anti bowling assembly last Friday that I think was really successful. We had a good turnout for. It was Sweethearts and Heroes returning back. Student government is up and running. We had our first meeting. It was mostly just to establish our goals for the year. We're hoping to do another community service project and do another blood drive. We're hoping to do the blood drive earlier this year so it doesn't interfere with trims or sports equipment like that. Last year, we think we had a lower turnout than we were expecting because that day I think was tracks, trims, and then baseball was leading up to their trims as well. So we're hoping to do community service a little bit earlier in the year and get that started quicker in order to be able to get a turnout. Last meeting, I know it was brought up, the student government introductions were later in the year. I'm hoping to do those by the next meeting, so at our next board meeting, the 27th. 25th. We're hoping to do student government introductions at that meeting. And then one of our major goals for this year is to revisit the previous student government president at the Prevertail, her proposal for senior privileges to leave during lunch and study halls. We're hoping to revisit that earlier in order to be able to find a feasible solution. That's pretty much all I have. The last thing, so last year, one thing that was brought to student government was the senior privilege to leave during lunch periods and study hall. The proposal ended up not being brought together until later in the year. And so we're hoping to revisit her proposal and look at what needs to be changed on that and make any adjustments needed earlier in the year so that we can move it forward quicker.
Thank you. Thanks Grace. Just, I forgot to go back to board comments. There was a FAFSA night earlier this week. I was actually listening to Gracie that made me think of it because your mom was there. And so I want to thank the district for hosting that. I know that it was done in tandem with Siena College and Ichabod Crane. It was very informative and I liked that we provided the service to the communities. Superintendent's report. You have a couple of them today Sal?
Well, we got, we're gonna share the burden here. So first of all, October is Board Appreciation Month. So we appreciate you for showing up tonight. Anyway, we wanted to take a moment to just recognize our Board of Education for the countless volunteer hours that you put in in serving the school district and the community. So for that, I'd like to turn it over to Justin. Who will show a token of appreciation, the high school. Enjoyful anticipation. I remember the year that the elementary students did portraits of all of you. Maybe these are ceramic busts of the board members. We'll have to see. It's a bobblehead, it's a superintendent bobblehead. Again, for anyone who's not served on a board or then is new to the board, you realize the number of hours behind the scenes in terms of reading information about the district, doing some research. Tomorrow evening, we're gonna be visiting Ichabod Crane. Central School District looking at some of the capital project improvements they've made to better inform our decision making going forward. So there's a lot of time and effort that's put on, that put forth that not everyone sees. So thank you on behalf of everyone in the district, our students, our staff, our faculty. I think you should open, I'm curious. Gorgeous. Very nice.
Have that name of the senior in the card that made it awesome.
Very nice. I'll make sure that Tina and the art department and the students are recognized for their efforts. Okay, moving on, the second item under my superintendent's report, again sharing the duties here. I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Keegan, our teacher leader and head of the senior team. And they're here to make a presentation this evening.
Hi, everybody. So as Sal said, my name's Ashley Keegan, the senior team leader. Obviously here representing the senior team. Just in order of how they're sitting, Jen Diorio, Donna Eager, Megan Conley, Robbie Sickle, Mark Pearson, and Sandy Fisher make up the senior team. And we are the team that is tasked with putting on the senior program, which consists of the CD binder, the senior capstone presentations, and our senior expo night. In recent years, as you know, Megan does most of the lifting for us in ELA class. But I'm here to talk to you today about a new initiative that we are kind of trying to work out this year. So I really have two objectives. The first one is to tell you about the initiative and then the second one is to ask for a little bit of help in getting it underway. So what we are attempting to do this year is a mock interview event where our Chatham seniors have community members with interviewing experience come into the high school in November, it will be November 16th, and do an interview with the students. Our goal and really the impetus for this was to make it a much more realistic and authentic experience. We used to do teachers interviewing the students and for various reasons, namely like I don't have interview experience. It wasn't as authentic and it was really comfortable because it was teachers that they knew. And so, not that we wanted to make them uncomfortable, but to give it a little bit more authenticity, we had came up with this idea that we could invite community members in. They would do an interview with a student. Each community member would do two interviews. Each student would do one, one community member. And then we would have a panel where they could ask questions, they could give feedback. And again, it would be a much more authentic experience. We also really believe that it'll help strengthen that connection with community members as well as really highlight the depth and wealth of diversity that we have in the Chatham community. That's something that's come up in the board before and we thought that this would just really kind of hit all of those things that we care about. And so we put it out to the community. We put out a flyer and some social media blasts and we have 18 respondents so far that are willing to help us. All of the feedback has been really great. People seem really excited about this. We've had a lot of Chatham graduates that have, are now working in the community that have said they would be much, very willing to help. But we still need 22 more ideally. We need about 40 people to get what we need done. We have a two hour block for the seniors, so we're gonna do one hour of the interviews and then one hour of the panel. And so in order to make our vision work, we need about 40 community members that would be willing to come in and give us some time. Right now, we have 18 people that have said that they would be willing. And so we're really looking for folks in the trades. We surveyed the students to see where their interests and their future lies so that we can make it even more authentic and try and pair them with someone that has some experience in their field. So we really need some folks in the trades. We really need some medical professionals, anyone that has experience in the medical profession, the engineering profession, and the real estate profession would be really, really helpful to try and pair the students. We're not solely looking for those, but that's where we have a little bit of.
Please. Do you have, because maybe I can point some people to come in with me. Do we have any real estate law people that have volunteered to work on this experience?
I don't believe so. Everyone can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe so. I think we have maybe at least one person who has some law experience, but no real estate law. So that would be great.
If I were coming in, I could like lean on one of my sons.
That would be fantastic.
Come along?
That would be fantastic.
I was asking because there is somebody who is related that might have it. If he hasn't, then I will, I can't say that I'm, I've never really been, with the real estate, you're not really interviewed. So it's kind of hard for me to know what to ask them. I can, I did talk to like middle school students last year about what it takes to get into the real estate field, the education or whatever. But you really, I mean, you just kind of sell yourself. And most realtors are willing to take you on if you're willing to put in the time and effort. But maybe let me, I'll look into it and see if I can lean on one of my two.
That would be, that would be awesome. And we will have a list of questions for interviewers in case they need them. But we're just, we just really want to give the kids as authentic an experience as we can. And we as a team have been talking a lot about what makes a Chatham student and what that looks like and being able to take that and prepare our students for the adult world. And we just felt in our conversations that how we were doing the interview was good, but it wasn't great. And so we really think that not only could this be great for the students, but it can also start to bridge that gap between the community.
Right, so are you looking like for plumbers, for electricians?
Yes, yeah. Yes, yep, plumbers, electricians, welding, HVAC.
A contractor that is, has a child with a senior this year.
Yes, and we haven't yet leave on our students. We have discussed, we want to send it out to students and have them try to recruit as well, which we may, you know, because they obviously know a lot of people. But we were really hoping that between us, the board, getting out to the public, that we would have enough people willing to give their time. And our goal certainly is to have this continue and, you know, see what we can make of it. So if not this year, you can always contact me. The information is on the website and Facebook. My name's Ashley Keegan and you can look for my email and contact me directly. So I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
So when I'm asking people about this, approximately how long should I save the time commitment?
About two hours. So again, if they can only give us an hour, you know, and can't do the panel or they can come in for the panel and not, we're kind of, we're flexible. But we're thinking eight to 10 and probably, you know, we'd love people to be here 7:30 and then that means 7:45 and then we'll get started at eight. But we would top, you know, two and a half hours. Thank you. It is a Wednesday, so November 16th, and it would be in the morning.
So is there a, I love the trades, I love the school to employment concept. Can we do something similar for college?
Yeah, you're kind of reading, you're right in the mind of the senior team. We talked about that a lot, not only college, but the military. So if I, if I just back up a little bit, one of, we were very college path focused for a lot of years. I think that was the push in general, but we're all college graduates and it was just kind of our focus. We were actually hearing a lot from the kids that were saying, you're not talking to me, right? I want to go to the military, I want to go into the trades. And so we really made a concerted effort to try and think about a holistic path. What we decided in terms of this was we didn't really want to muddy the waters. And so this was kind of focused on a career path. We have some connections with college interview and admissions folks. And I think down the line, we would like that as well as military to offer that as well. But what we really thought was, you know, we have college admissions folks there. The kids who aren't thinking about college, they're gonna tune them out. And the kids who are thinking about college and not career, they might tune this out. So we really kind of wanted to compartmentalize it as much as we could. But college admissions, military folks are definitely pathways that we know our students take and will hopefully bring those in down the line. Yeah, that's important to us as well. Can I answer any other questions?
You've got me thinking Ashley, tomorrow I'll make a few phone calls. I'm thinking the folks at Questar, in particular Gym Church Business Partnerships and Gladys, who have connections with CTE and, and other, you know, wonderful programs they have going on with the trades, the to work pipeline. I think we, they, they're due for a call and see if they can help us out.
I think that would be great. We had told, you know, we want as much as possible to pair the students up with something of their interest. But I think we all know that just having the experience is going to be very valuable. So we're gonna try as much as we can, but there's a wide range of interests of the students, if you can imagine. But those were some of the ones that we were, we were lacking.
Is this prominent on the website? I haven't seen, I haven't seen it.
I know that it was put on the website and put on Facebook a couple of weeks ago. So I can always reach out to Adam Charbonneau and have like another media blast.
And your contact is through, is on there also?
Yes, yep, so there's a QR code that my contact is on there and then there's a QR code if they want to scan, has a little bit more information. And then just a survey, a quick survey about are they willing and able to get the full two hours? What's their interest, what's their experience?
Thank you.
So yeah.
And just to answer your question Fred, right on our more headlines, it's one of the selected projects. So that's readily available on the homepage.
So I, we really appreciate your time. We're really excited. It's, you know, we kind of get a little seed of an idea. We, we were meeting over the summer and Mr. Dorson rightfully so, just kind of tried, keep it simple this year. Keep it, we had all these grand ideas. So we're really excited. I think the kids will get a lot of value from it. And I think again, it just hits a lot of our goals. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Yes, thanks all, thanks to all of you. Anyone else on the team want to make any comments while you're? Okay, guys, it's great spoke, great, great, great spokesperson. Okay, thank you again. Just a couple other term, in terms of my update. Just a reminder that the next board meeting on October 25th is gonna be a pretty intensive one. We are, we've invited our architects to come and give the board a comprehensive overview of our work to this point on the next capital project. This will be the first opportunity for the entire board to hear some of the scope items and work that has been done over the last few months. In particular, I see some of our high school folks with us, the architects at the meeting with content area teams to get ideas. And you'll see that all come together in a presentation that the facilities committee is very proud to bring to you on the 25th. In addition, as a request of several of the board members, on the 25th, our PPS team will also be here led by Renee Morgan, the teacher leader, head of our PPS guidance team, and Brian Simon, our director of PPS. So we'll be hearing from our guidance, social worker psychologists, and school counselors. And I don't want to leave anybody else, social worker psychologists, school counselors, guidance. I think that's, it's everyone on the team. So that's going to be a comprehensive review of that whole program that was requested by the board. So we're gonna have a fun packed evening that evening. So I have, it's my distinct pleasure to introduce, introduce a new staff person to you. On this evening's agenda, you will be approving my recommendation to hire our new assistant principal at MED, who's joined us this evening with her family. So I'd like to formally introduce Stacy Moscato. Stacy is coming to us from the Albany City School District. Currently a social studies teacher, has done some administrative work in terms of summer school. We, she had a pretty extensive first round interview with all of the grade level teachers and our special areas, our encore, and several other individuals. And it is my pleasure to welcome Stacy to the, to the Chatham family. She will be start, she'll begin with us on November 14th, Monday, November 14th. As she is given, after tonight's approval, will give her current employer notice, the sufficient notice she needs. So welcome and welcome to your family and we are, we are excited to have you. Okay, and you'll have plenty of opportunities to get to know Stacy as in the coming months, so thank you. As was mentioned earlier, we had Sweethearts and Heroes here last week for a couple of days. They made the rounds between the high school and the middle school. They're coming back in April to do a two day program at MED and perhaps some follow up at the middle school. At, here at the high school, I didn't have the opportunity to attend, but I believe we had different grade levels go through in the auditorium. Is that how that worked, Gabby? At same time, okay. Got it, okay. At the, at the middle school, we had a schoolwide assembly and then the following day, they facilitated circles throughout the whole day. And so all of our students at the middle school had a chance to participate. Little bit of a distraction, we had a fire drill or we had a fire line go off right in the middle of the first presentation, which was a little distracting. But they're always well received and again, their theme, because October is bully, bully prevention, bullying prevention month, they had a theme around bully prevention and they're always a welcomed addition to our, our programs. You may have seen or will see in the Times Union, there's Times Union article that appears this evening regarding a grant that Questar has received. I have not had a chance to fully brief the board on this because I wasn't expecting it to be a news article. But we are one of the, I believe, 17 districts who will be participating in a three year grant to bring a product called Stop It Solutions to the district. There are two, they have several products available, but the two products that we will be integrating over the next year, the first is an anonymous reporting system, an anonymous reporting system that allows us to provide an opportunity for students to report potential self harm threatening behaviors in a manner that would be monitored 24/7 by a, by a service and then translate that information to the district to operate on. So that's one of two products. The other product is a silent 911 panic alarm. If you recall or have heard of Alyssa's Law, Alyssa's Law was put into effect this past year, which recommends that schools provide silent 911 panic when possible. This grant will allow us to kind of get ahead of the curve on that and provide an optional app for staff to use to basically hit a, the equivalent of a lockdown button on their phone. So we've got, we're really ramping up our security profile this year. This is one of several things that we're going to be doing throughout the year. Again, board knows that we have a, a security audit underway. Once we get the results of that audit, we'll be addressing any material weaknesses or deficiencies that are brought to our attention. And this is one product that we hope will help provide better preparedness in terms of a unfortunate incident. There are 17 school districts participating in the grant that Questar received. There was enough funding for a three year grant and we opted in with our colleagues in Columbia County. On the list, Ichabod, Hudson, Levin, and Taconic Hills are among the other districts participating in this grant. And just a reminder that we have a board retreat coming up on November 1st. That's on an alternate Tuesday where there is not a board meeting scheduled. We'll be meeting here beginning at 5:30, more details will be forthcoming on that. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thanks Sal. No, no. Team and new employee, if you guys want to go, you're more than welcome to at this point.
I just wanted to make a comment about November 1st, when we scheduled that, we did not know that the Powderpuff game was going on that night. Both of my sons are coaches, so my husband's gonna have to, I might be running out in between both of them.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go to the Public Library Advisory Committee.
We had an executive meeting today because there were two things that needed to be addressed because our, the library director is suddenly leaving, which is, I'm very happy for her because she got a job very much closer to home and she's not gonna go commuting, but it's gonna be a big loss to Chatham. So we were able in the executive session to approve the emergency plan that all the other schools had already had in place. And they put one in place for the library. We approved that today. And we also approved a temporary, if we agree to it today, to send the name of a woman who was the director of the library about 10 years ago, who will be the interim, 20 hours a week to kind of hold us over so we can hire somebody new. So that was basically what happened. I mean, you were there, Sal.
I read the emergency material and I called her and I told her that part of what I was concerned with, you didn't make any changes, right?
We made a couple few, but it was more.
It was done, but it was very well done.
Yeah, it was, it was just name, a couple of names and telephone numbers, like Jen's name was deleted, but that was basically it. She'd done, she's done a phenomenal job on everything she's done. It's unfortunate that we are losing her so quick, but I understand she has a huge commute every day.
And we have, as the board knows, we posted that position. And I don't have the deadline in front of me, but we made it for two or three weeks from now. That's right, you're right, the 31st.
Thanks Matt. New business, we have a motion to approve an MOA with the CCSTA, School Teachers Association. Can I have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion to approve another MOA with the CCSTA. You have a motion?
Aye.
You, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to appoint, appoint an impartial hearing officer. They have a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, to the consensus agenda, we have a motion to accept the consensus agenda items I through K. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the minutes. That's all one, okay, great. To L, old business? Okay. We have a, may I have a motion to designate voting delegates?
So we left this, we put this last on the agenda under old business in anticipation of the fact that when Matt surveyed everyone for, for interest in this, there didn't seem to be anybody who wanted to, to be a delegate. And if that's the case, that's not a problem, but we would just have a motion to remove this.
Okay. So we still do not have anybody interested in acting in that capacity. That's what you get for not showing up.
That'll teach them.
That's how you become important. That's how you become a pork. All right, so failed motion on that. We have, next is item M, items for future agenda. Do we have future agenda items?
I don't have any currently to propose.
It's time for the second public comment. No one here has changed, so I'm guessing no one here, unless you thought of something.
We have three.
One in the chat.
That was me. Oh, to tell them that we're, we're starting a few minutes late.
Okay, so do we have, we have three people raising their hands or?
No.
Anybody online want to raise their hand for public comment?
We have two employees and unidentified participants, so.
Just hold this behind you so that. All right, that looks like it concludes our agenda for this evening. Can I have, do we have a reason for an executive session?
We do not.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Fred.
All in favor? Record time. Beautiful.